Pleasant morning, everyone. The regular session of the Ninth San Muriang Panduso of the City of Palaniake is now called to order. Everyone please rise, put in location. Councilor Pablo Olibares II may be requesting you to lead the prayer, please.
Ready for that in our salivis, presenta na nating Panino Diyos. Salado tama, na natin, salivis na natin. Panino Diyos, lupa pa sa lahat ng mga paborin sa araw, may di din sa ating mga ayaw ng mga tapito, mga tapit, dito sa simbol, na mapito, tinon. Parang salamat sa ating mga pamilya, sa ating mga naisan, sa ating mga taba. Sana po ay pagtutayan 'yung paborin ngayong mga tapito, kung ang mga pag-usap, at mga pag-hadin, ng mga pagdulha, mga naisusod, at mga opinyansa para sa lahat ng mga mayroon sa Palaniake. Lahat tapito ay inaalam ko natin sa'yo, at hinataas mo namin ang lahat ng tapito na alam, parang ano. Salado tama, na natin, salivis na natin.
Thank you, Councilor Pablo Olibares. Mr. Secretary Tati, may di call there on?
May ka pisi, present with the call. Councilor Pobengia Almao. Councilor Daniel Eric Baez. Councilor David Argento. Councilor Rafaelito Villacantia. Councilor Maria Piscinas Barra. Councilor Councilor Jerome Mark Prias. Councilor Pablo Zincapio Junior. Councilor Jose Enrique Titores. Councilor Piliadde Vignion. Councilor Pablo Olibares II. Councilor Pablo Kison. Councilor Marvin Santos. Councilor Nida Cebi Arso. Councilor Alan Portan. Councilor Tep Ryan Iliana. Councilor Jose Maria Piliadna. He got President Christopher Villar. And Escape Division President Hannah and Corin. We have all to do, this is what I'm here for.
There are enough members to constitute a forum, we now proceed. Secretary's report. There's a motion to adopt the Secretary's report, and the second, seconded by Councilor Ryan Iliana, Secretary's report is adopted. Approval of the minutes of the session of the preview session.
Who approved it?
There was an approval, there was a motion to approve. Seconded by Councilor Oki Baez, minutes of the preview session dated July 21, 2022, is approved.
For first reading, we have draft ordinance number eight, series of 2022. Councilor Alan Portan as proponent. An ordinance prohibiting the abandonment of those in effect of persons with disabilities or impairment imposing penalties for violations thereof and for other purposes.
Draft ordinance number eight is referred to the Committee on Persons with Disabilities.
Draft ordinance number nine, series of 2022, in the presence of Christopher Villar as proponent. An ordinance waiving the legion of sins in line with the delayed registration of birth offered by the PRC's Birth Registration Assistance Project in the City of Palaniake.
Draft ordinance number nine is referred to the Committee on Ways and Means and Committee on Social Services.
Draft ordinance number ten, series of 2022, Councilor Maria Piscini Espana as proponent. An ordinance institutionalizing the activities during Palaniake Cityhood with long duration and providing funds thereof.
Draft ordinance number ten is referred to the Committee on Culture, History and Tourism and the Committee on Appropriations. Ah yes, Councilor Prias, your issue ahead.
If I have respect to draft ordinance numbers, then we know which committee will take the lead with respect to this one.
Since I mentioned the Committee on Ways and Means first, the Committee on Ways and Means ah needs the the committee.
Thank you, Madam.
Next.
Next, we have draft resolution number eleven, series of 2022. Councilor Marvin Santos as proponent. Resolution authorizing the Honorable Mayor Eric L. Olivares and the City Treasurer Dr. Anthony F. Humano to execute and maintain for and on behalf of the City Government of Palaniake. The Local Government's House with its Depository Park, the Land Bank of the Philippines, Subhat Palaniake branch, designating and naming for this purpose the foregoing officials as authorized signatories thereof.
Draft resolution eleven is referred to the Committee on Appropriations.
Draft resolution number twelve, series of 2022, Councilor Marvin Santos as proponent. In resolution authorizing the Honorable Mayor Eric L. Olivares and the City Treasurer Dr. Anthony F. Humano to execute and maintain for and on behalf of the City Government of Palaniake in the Local Government's House with its collection agent, the Union Bank, Subhat Palaniake branch, designating and naming for this purpose the foregoing officials as authorized signatories thereof.
Draft resolution number twelve is referred to the Committee on Appropriations.
Draft resolution number thirteen, series of 2022, Councilor Marvin Santos as proponent. In resolution authorizing the Honorable Mayor Eric L. Olivares and the City Treasurer Dr. Anthony F. Humano to execute and maintain for and on behalf of the City Government of Palaniake in the Local Government's House with its Depository Park, Development Park of the Philippines as shared branch, designating and naming for this purpose the foregoing officials as authorized signatories thereof.
Draft resolution thirteen is referred to the Committee on Appropriations.
Draft resolution number fourteen, series of 2022, Councilors Alan Portan, November, draft by Elito De La Peña, Daniel Eric Baez, Pablo Olibares II, and Jerome Mark Emprias as proponent. In resolution authorizing the Honorable Mayor Eric L. Olivares to represent the City of Palaniake to sign and execute on demand to agreement with Bay City Commercial Ventures Corporation and Estrel Supermalls for the pre-admission of qualified senior citizens in cinema houses in the territorial jurisdiction of the City of Palaniake.
Draft resolution number fourteen is referred to the Committee on Appropriations and the Committee on Senior Citizens.
Draft resolution number fifteen, series of 2022, Escape Division President Hannah of Marvin Prias as proponent. In resolution encouraging Filipino football player Ana Hia Victoria Arso in the Philippine Allied Football Club under twelve for winning bronze medal in the La Liga Youth Tournament in Asia held last July twenty-three and twenty-four, twenty-two held in Copa Amira in Malaysia.
Draft resolution number fifteen is referred to the Committee on Youth and Sports. Yes, Councilor Ryan Iliana.
Thank you, Madam Chair. With due respect to ordinance number eight, the very first ordinance, since it will be uh, reading in penalties, Madam Chair, may we include the thing you can wait in? Uh, Madam Chair, uh.
Yes, uh, Councilor.
Uh, parang imposin, imposin, uh, sorry.
And Councilor Marvin Santos, you're right.
Parang imposin, talaga, eh. Or imposing penalties, Madam Chair, that's right.
So the draft ordinance number eight remains to be referred to the Committee on Persons with Disabilities, since we are not, this is not a legislative generating ordinance.
I can correct it, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Councilor Ryan Iliana, next.
Draft resolution number sixteen, series of 2022. Uh, Councilor Liga President Christopher Villar as proponent. In resolution authorizing the Honorable Mayor Eric L. Olivares to enter into the inside corner in behalf of the City of Palaniake and enter into by the city, by the city of Palaniake and visiting statistics authority for the PRC's Birth Registration Project for the City of Palaniake.
Draft ordinance number sixteen is referred to the Committee on Social Services and the Committee on External Affairs.
Next, we have draft resolution number seventeen, series of 2022. Councilor Marvin Santos as proponent. In resolution authorizing the Honorable Mayor Eric L. Olivares to sign for and behalf of the City of Palaniake the in line with the committee within the City Government of Palaniake and taking business statistics authority for its proposed project entitled PRC's Birth Registration Assistance Project for the City of Palaniake.
Draft ordinance number seventeen is referred to the Committee on Social Services and External Affairs.
Draft resolution number eighteen, series of 2022, Councilor San Muriang Panduso as proponent. In resolution modifying the internal works of procedure of the ninth Council of Palaniake.
Draft ordinance number nineteen, I think, you said draft ordinance number nineteen?
It's eighteen. Eighteen, Madam Chair.
Eighteen, seventeen. Draft ordinance number eighteen is referred to the Committee on Works and Oversight.
Next is draft resolution number nineteen, uh, Councilor Marvin Santos as proponent. In resolution authorizing the Honorable Mayor Eric L. Olivares and the City Treasurer Dr. Anthony F. Humano for and on behalf of the City Government of Palaniake to open or place a time de morte house in the Land Bank of the Philippines Subhat Palaniake branch for the either funds in amount not exceeding four hundred millions pesos committee taken from the special education funds of the City Government of Palaniake.
Draft resolution number nineteen is referred to the Committee on Ways and Means and the Committee on Appropriations.
Next, we have communications versus.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Councilor Marvin Santos.
Uh, regarding ordinance number sixteen and seventeen, parang thing made good. Parang siya na ano?
Yes, uh. But different, I think, uh, was this passed for first reading?
Yes, first reading.
For, for this session?
Yes. Uh, ano, 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 proponent, mga breaking of rules, at least, sana. At least, ano, ordinance na ano? Then, ah, resolution, sorry.
The usual practice, uh, whenever we have this, uh, common ordinance or resolution, the proponents would agree to just combine the resolution into one.
Yes, Madam Chair, uh.
Of proponents.
Please, dalawa, to, to, sa, ano, resolution, you, you acknowledge, sir, then?
Uh, yes, uh, Councilor Prias, right. Thank you, Madam Chair, uh, can you rise to this resolution? Uh, since our president's, the, uh, the president is not around, uh, we just have to talk to each other privately. Because mine, uh, I don't know where his idea, of course, that's his idea. But mine can say it's, it came from, directly from the department of, uh, Noansan Gail of the, of our local senate. So I have to, to speaker, talk to our president, the House of the President, Ryan. Yes, uh, thank you, Councilor Prias. Uh, Councilor Rico Gómez.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Normally, when we have uh, legislation of, who, who legislate of similar nature uh, for first reading, na na natin, eh, ready, ready, para sa respective committee. And then, the second reading na to, na na lang natin, eh, uh, okay, uh, you know, combine na lang natin, dalawa. And, uh, it's a practice of the council, kung si may kabuna, na na, let's pa receive. Madalasayin ka talaga sa meeting, from the perspective of the uh, there may be a score, na, na, parang, mga resolutions, ordinance of similar nature, of na, na, tukang na sa second meeting, na, na, pa, na, na, na. Most of the time, uh, I have searched, and I will, I will, the, the, you na, 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 the, the. This is also a common practice in the setting.
Thank you for that point of information, Councilor Gómez. So I suppose we, we move on to the next member, communications. Mr. Councilor Tati.
Is for first reading, the letter from Mr. Alexander Zandan. OICCPU, the General Office requesting for passage of an ordinance granting financial incentive to all bidding athletes of the Philippine Youth Games and Philippine National Games of the City of Palaniake.
Letter from Mr. Alex Zandan is referred to the Committee on Youth and Sports and the Committee on Appropriations.
Next is a notification from Mr. Yvonne G. Argante, OICCPU, NCR, and Deputy Office to the election of officers of the, uh, UCL City Chapter of Palaniake, August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-two, and endorsement of the practice of the valid new dominance, the annual number twenty-twenty-two, that's zero sixty-five, and by that election of the Philippine Grand University, provision, provision, Federation City Chapter and Regional Council officers for the term twenty-twenty-two to twenty-twenty-five. Number two is UCL Constitution and idols as amended to twenty-twenty-two. Number three is a number three is a resolution, number zero two, series of twenty-two, uh, a tighter resolution adapting the election guidelines and policy of the Philippine Councilary. And last is a large certification of members in this time.
The invitation for this, Ayubin Argante of YALG and CR is, uh, very well noted, may be asked, the City Council Secretary, could please distribute the invitation, uh, for all the councilors? Uh, yes, uh, Councilor Vando Pison.
Madam Chair, um, uh, I request to change the date of the elections here in City Chapter of Palaniake. Uh, rather than August fifteenth, uh, if possible, August twenty-five. Two thousand and twenty-five.
Uh, that was a point of information from Councilor Vando Pison, so that if the elections will be mailed instead of August fifteenth?
August twenty-five.
It's gonna be happen on August twenty-five. Uh, that is very well noted. Next.
Next is an endorsement from Honorable Eric L. Olivares, City Mayor, requesting concurrence of the San Antonio members for the confirmation of appointment of Attorney Polter, City Director of the City of Palaniake.
Endorsement letter from Mayor Eric Olivares is referred to the Committee on Labor and Appointments.
Next is an endorsement from Honorable Eric L. Olivares, City Mayor, requesting concurrence of the San Antonio members on the confirmation of appointment of Attorney Marvin Prias, as City government department director, uh, officer of the city, permission officer of the city.
Endorsement from Eric L. Olivares, from Mayor Eric Olivares is referred to the Committee on Labor and Appointments.
Next is an endorsement from Honorable Eric L. Olivares, City Mayor, requesting concurrence of the San Antonio members on the confirmation of appointment of Attorney Pacho Avasquez, as City Government Department Director, City Indian Officer to opposite.
Endorsement from Mayor Eric L. Olivares is referred to the Committee on Labor and Appointments.
Madam Chair.
Yes, uh, Majority floor leader.
Uh, Mayor, uh, the Committee on Labor Appointments, na, please, immediately. Since yung, tatlong, uh, communication, kailangan, kailangan ko ng City natin, sa patapatangko ko ng atin. Salamat po.
That is well noted. It's the Majority floor, next. Committee reports.
Who to dispatch, the Committee, reading of Committee report?
There was a motion to dispatch the reading of the Committee reports, seconded by Councilor Jerome Prias. The reading of Committee reports is, uh, dispatched with part of their business.
For second meeting, we have, uh, draft resolution number six, series of twenty-two, Councilor Marvin Santos, General Ryan Iliana, Pablo Zincapio Junior, and David Argento, Fernando Kison, Nisa N, Arso, and Attorney Euro, Eric, and Prias as proponent. In resolution authorizing the Honorable Mayor Eric L. Olivares and the City Treasurer Dr. Anthony F. Humano for and on behalf of the City Government of Palaniake to open or place a time de morte house in the Land Bank of the Philippines, Subhat Palaniake branch for the either funds not exceeding one million pesos to be taken from the, uh, general funds of the City Government of Palaniake.
Draft, uh, resolution number six has, uh, I, I suppose, has its corresponding Committee report?
Madam Chair, who to adopt the law to the report?
There was a motion to adopt the Committee report. No objection? Is there any objection? Getting none. Committee report is adopted. Uh, Mr. Majority floor leader, Councilor Marvin Santos, you are recognized.
Thank you, uh, our president, Sir Vice Mayor John Delcorte. At sa atin ko, mga masama, sir. Sa atin ko, mga masama sa ating gallany. Madam Chair, ito po mga resolution na ito, mga ating pinahingi tulunan ng ating mga rutsol at ang ating mga presyoero, namuli po magnagatang na hindi talambas, may sampe nung pizza, wala po sa ating mga idle funds, wala sa general funds.
Councilor Vando Pizan is asking, "Councilor Bokinshong, are you satisfied with the answer, Councilor Ryan?"
Uh, Madam Chair, follow up question?
There's a follow-up question from Councilor Bokinshong, please proceed.
Presuming to say the waterborne diseases, it's not possible for me to talk about waterborne diseases. It's involved in our health, it's involved in our drainage system, it's related to our water supply. So, for the dissemination, it's not possible to spread it, it's not possible to spread it, and what are the consequences? How can you inform the people?
Thank you for that question, Councilor Ryan Liliana.
Yes, Madam Chair, Madam Chair, I think, uh, again, this is a resolution increasing awareness, preventing control. So, we have to have the supervisor, or the center, to make sure that we're aware of it. The intention of the resolution is to increase awareness of the waterborne diseases. And the danger is that if we get infected, we'll have to go to hospital. Uh, it's not possible to prevent it because it's related to our health. It's related to our health, so I think that's why I'm here. It's the beginning of awareness. Awareness, as I said, is important. It's a matter of course to our resolutions. To conduct, to make requests for our conduct, to conduct for the clean drive of our society. We need to take care of our owners, we need to thank them individually for their support for our waterborne diseases. Uh, we are required also the implementation of ordinance number 1925, which is the 25th ordinance. According to the law, the Public Information Office is able to inform awareness by hosting, uh, all the necessary documents, by the way, by the government, by the forum.
Thank you, Councilor Ryan Liliana. Are you satisfied, Councilor Bokinshong, with the answer? I think he is satisfied, Councilor Bokinshong is smiling.
Yes, Councilor Vando.
Uh, Councilor Vando Pizan, do you have any more questions?
Uh, so I'm aware that, uh, perhaps the president is aware now. I don't know, um, so I'm going to comment on the comments. Because the airport diseases are now the whole of us. Generally, in our Philippines, we don't have any waterborne diseases. Uh, influenza, respiratory viruses, that are causing problems, coughing, cough, especially with the engine. There are many cases like coughing. I hope that we can prove it, so I'm going to comment on the comments for this. I'm going to comment on the background, Madam Chair.
Any more questions on the floor? Any more questions? Yes, Councilor Bokinshong.
Madam Chair, because, uh, here, there's a lot of, uh, there's a lot of people. There's a lot of people. So, uh, I'm just sorry, I'm really sorry. I just want to go to the, uh, the ground, I'm going to go, uh, to the bathroom, to the bathroom. Uh, I'm sorry, 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 I'm sorry. Uh, I mean, uh, a lot of infectious diseases are not possible to decrease because of the ground. I believe during the committee meeting, they invited people to the ground, so what are the actions to the ground?
Councilor Ryan Liliana.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Uh, I think the action to the ground is, if, uh, by the resolution, it's a matter of course of the mayor about waterborne diseases. It's a matter of course of awareness of the mayor.